Good afternoon, everybody. And Commissioner Ziffer? Maybe, maybe we're on mute?
I'm here.
All right. Commissioner Ziffer is joining today's workshop via conference call. And we, I believe Commissioner Richardson is in the house and will be making his way over pretty soon. But Commissioners, we now have our opening discussion about the 2018, 2017, 2018 budget for the city of Tallahassee. I'm thankful to those who have chosen to come and participate. This is the portion of the meeting where we will invite those individuals who have comments to make on agenda items. Each speaker will have three minutes available to them. And Treasury Clerk, any speakers?
Sir, we have no speakers as of this moment.
Okay. There are no speakers, and so I'll pass the presentation over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this is your third update on the budget this year. Today's discussion will include a second quarter budget update, new municipal cost comparisons for small businesses, and a discussion about the FY '18 budget plan. The next workshop is scheduled for June 14th. Your assistant city managers are here alone with key staff. At this time, I would like to ask Robert Wigan to go over the agenda for today and introduce Matt Matherne, who will provide the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor-appointed officials, Commissioners. We have three main topics to address today. We have completed the second quarter of fiscal year 2017 and want to report on the budget assumptions that we are meeting and those things that we are monitoring as we move forward through the third and fourth quarter of 2017. We're also very excited about results from our municipal cost comparison, where we've brought back comparisons for businesses in the community and as compared to others in other communities. And then with master plans progressing and as part of the reorganization process, a focus on public safety and infrastructure goals all now updated, there are some final critical revenue estimates that we're expecting in June. There are some basic assumptions that we want to talk about now for fiscal year '18 to make sure that we are, we're getting feedback and discussing these issues early and often. Financial Management has very capable staff. They're a very engaged team. And with that in mind, I'd like to introduce Matt Matherne, Senior Management Analyst with Financial Management. He's got 10 years of experience in local government consulting services, fire services, fees, rate studies, operational reviews. And then he's spent 10 years with our utilities in organizing major projects across the city government. He'll walk through the agenda and be open to questions as we proceed through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. So I'd like to do is start with an overview of the fiscal year '17 budget plan. As an overview of the fiscal year '17 budget plan, please recall that as we went through the fiscal year '17 budget process last year and development of this, we reviewed some proactive steps the Commission had previously taken during the recession to do things like fast-track capital projects, refunding of utility deposits and use of reserves, and that as we restored balance in the funds over those next couple of years, we continued to address community service standards and expectations. Things like guaranteed permit turnaround times, enhanced public safety staffing, and full support of an economic development office. And further, as we developed the fiscal year '17 budget, we confirmed the Commission's responsible use of resources based on public feedback that resulted in additional public safety staffing, a focus on streets and sidewalks, and two tax cuts. As Robert mentioned, one of the things we want to do today as part of the '17 update is, and we committed to doing this for you at the last quarterly update, is we've, we're doing some work to expand the municipal cost comparison. The slide you see before you and on the screen, we know you've seen before, and this is a metric that we review and update every year. And a quick review when compared to 11 other Florida municipal cities, the current data shows that Tallahassee residents pay less than the average. In fact, we're at the bottom of the list, second from the bottom. And that we pay less than the average for municipal services. This comprehensive comparison includes seven categories based on the services that we provide: property taxes, water, sewer, and electric utility rates, solid waste rates, stormwater, and fire service fees. The municipal cost comparison has always helped us answer the question for residential residents: what does this mean to me and how does this affect me and my family? One of the things about the cost comparison for residential is we normalize it through the utilization of median home valuation so that we can draw meaningful comparisons with our sister cities. As we reviewed in the Q1 update, the comparison shows that the total cost of services in the city of Tallahassee is in the neighborhood of $2,900 a year and that we remain the second lowest amongst the 12 compared cities. And that's despite the city of Tallahassee having the second-largest service area to provide services to and the second-largest population to serve. So with the success of that program and some of the data that we've been putting together, we asked ourselves, why not build on this good idea and extend this comparison and start to look at some business metrics? The next slide also shows some charts I know you've seen before. Wanted to review them very quickly in light of this move to the business, the creation of the business municipal cost comparison. In the Financial Management Office, as we pivot to be more responsive to feedback from the community and further our transparency goals, we begin to identify a means to make comparisons for our local business community as well. As I said before, you will definitely recognize these charts, and there are certainly some differences as you go to apply this to the business community. However, there are some of the same conditions that apply to the business community: the high square mileage of our service territory, the high population we serve when compared to the other cities, as well as the idea and the challenge that we have with such a significant portion of properties within the city off the tax base. Within the city of Tallahassee, of course, we have FAMU, Florida State, TCC, Lively, State of Florida, school board, federal properties, city, county properties, nonprofits, and churches. So our goals here were to build on the metrics and success of the residential cost comparison and then also to develop a way so we can see the continuing effects of Commission actions to assist the commercial sector. So in developing the business, the municipal cost comparison for business, we face two challenges. The first is what are referred to as internal validity, or in other words, how do I compare one business to another? There's a wide variety of businesses out there, in fact, thousands of business types. In the residential cost comparison, we were able to establish a baseline of median property value and customer usage statistics relative to that standard. And we had a strong, and I gave a strong validity and strong confidence that that single comparison would allow us to compare ourselves to other cities. To achieve that same validity and confidence in the comparisons is much more complicated for the commercial sector. For a strong business-to-business validity, no single metric works. You must consider multiple variables and multiple types of business or uses. So we looked at things, for example, everything from yearly sales, inventory levels, square footage of these businesses, the use, the number of seats, the number of employees. And again, those different metrics mean different things to different businesses. The second challenge we faced was external validity. External validity also existed when we made the comparison in the residential sector. And what I'm, when I refer to, when I talk about external validity, I'm referring to city-to-city validity, to make sure these comparisons are valid. So the issue here is that you have all different types of owner-tenant arrangements. You have ownership of the entire building sometimes. You have a lot of, a lot of businesses that are, have a tenant arrangement with a landlord. So when you go to look at the meter, for example, you want to make sure you're looking at the meter for the business as opposed to the entire building, for example, if they're located inside a strip mall. And our solution was to evaluate each comparison city on a service-by-service basis, which, again, we had some experience with this from the residential cost comparison. And to give you a flavor, for example, if you look at solid waste services in South Florida, especially, certainly in Central Florida, there's such a wide variety of the way cities provide these services. Sometimes they have contracts with private vendors. Sometimes they provide the service themselves. Sometimes they have a contract with a neighboring city or a county. And then, of course, sometimes they even separate that disposal side versus collection side. So it can certainly get pretty complex. With all that said, and from our internal validity checks, it became apparent to us, as I said before, that no single business type comparison across multiple cities was going to give us a full and complete picture of how we're doing with respect to serving our commercial customers. Further, from our CIS data, our Customer Information System out of our utility database, we know that 90% of our customers are small to medium in terms of size, sales, inventory, and number of employees. So focusing on the small business sector not only provided the best internal and external validity, we feel, it also made sure we were looking at the metrics that mattered the most to the majority of our customers. So with that said, I want to go through the three categories that we are doing comparisons on at the time. You'll see the first one is a small service-related business. City of Tallahassee ranks second lowest amongst the comparison cities. In this case, we chose a local barber shop. It's approximately 600 square feet in size, very small business. And to give you a feel for their utility usage, electric usage, this is a, this is a business that consumes about 1,400 KWH of electricity a month. The second category we are looking at is food service. Again, smaller business, less than 2,000 square feet, certainly including coffee shops in this, which seem to be popping up everywhere. And if you look at the chart, you'll see that City of Tallahassee is the lowest amongst our comparison cities. One example of one of the services we looked at to give you a flavor for the differences, we looked at the solid waste bill. For this particular business that we chose, they receive service based on a six-cubic-yard dumpster, and their services picked up, their service calls for pickup twice a week. So we took that level of service and then made that comparison to the other cities. And then finally, we chose a medium-sized professional office. Definitely, again, something I think represents a type of business that we see quite a bit. This particular business was around 7,000 square feet, and the city of Tallahassee shows on the chart as the lowest amongst the comparison cities. In terms of, to give you another flavor here, the fire fee, for example, for this type of business, City of Tallahassee is not the lowest for the fire fee. However, again, this is a comprehensive review of all services. So we were somewhere in the middle of the pack in terms of the fire fee, but when you combine all the services and the total cost perspective, we show ourselves as the lowest. So what I'd like to do is just a summary wrap-up of the introduction of the enhancement to the municipal cost comparison tool. As I said before, we've been doing the residential cost comparison for over a decade now. We're now looking to add this business comparison component to our toolkit. The primary takeaway is that we have this additional tool along with our quarterly reporting, our Open Gov transparency, and our annual budget online. The municipal cost comparison is a reference to provide perspective about the financial efficacy of the programs and services we deliver to the residents and now the businesses we serve. It also allows staff to track the effects of continued Commission action to assist the commercial sector. Those actions recently that I see are elimination of the business tax, the millage reduction from last year, the return commercial utility deposits from a few years ago. I looked this up this morning. As of March, we are still the lowest small business rate for electricity in the state along with some of our investments to the business sector in terms of assisting them through economic incentives and assistance. I include in that the creation of the Sense of Place districts and, of course, our most recent step up on the investment in public infrastructure. Now, with that said, I'd like to transition and give you the update on the second quarter of fiscal year '17. As we've done, as we've shared with the Commission before, our process is this continuing emphasis on quarterly and ongoing updates and communication, not only to the Commission but also to our citizens, and also to be available 24/7 through the, through the internet, through the web. We also make use of financial metrics to identify issues and take action early, multiple times throughout the year, so we don't leave these issues out there towards the end of the fiscal year. And so far, the second quarter evaluation, so I'm referring to the month-ending March of this year, our fiscal year '17 budget plan assumptions are valid, although there are a couple of areas that require some action and monitoring based on current conditions. A topic that's a carryover that we talked from the first quarter update is an update on our electric utility. At that point, we pointed out that our retail sales were below our expectations because of a mild fall. Now that we've completed the fall and the winter, I can say that the mild weather has continued and we still have lower-than-expected retail sales. The good news is that the electric department is reacting to this and through the second quarter has already taken measures to reduce operating expenses through operational efficiencies and reduce costs. These sales and operations will be monitored through the summer to determine the net effect. Reserves are healthy. It's one of the things we do proactively, of course, to take into account this type of situation. And they've been set in anticipation of such circumstances, so even if this were to continue and this were to become a problem, there certainly would be no need for a short-term rate increase at this time. I'd also now like to move over to a discussion, short briefing on the Tallahassee Police Department.
Just out of curiosity on the utility side, because, you know, one would hate, obviously, that part of the benefit of mild weather inefficiencies is rate hike, which is not what you're proposing. But I imagine that, given the capacity that our system generates, do we have the ability? Should, for instance, the season continue to be mild based off of the fuel that we would have to purchase to create, you know, energy, the systems we would have to run to just make sure we had power available at the time that folks needed it? Are there systems adjustments that can be made? Either what stations, generating stations are operating? How do we get it such that it actually is an incentive for less fuel to be used?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that question. That's a good question, of course. If we don't generate electricity, we don't use fuel, so that's right off the top. So that lowers overall expenses, and that's good. That's passed through through bill savings. Largely what drives our dispatch of generation is the need to meet reliability requirements. So we are a belt-and-suspenders industry. To the extent we anticipate demand, we run multiple units to make sure they're available, even if a unit were to fail or trip offline unexpectedly. So that's what drives it. It's not so much the unexpected use of electricity. It's more of a reliability element in the industry. Although I will say that we, to the extent we forecast lower demand, we have the opportunity to either turn units off, to your point, or even sell power to our neighbors, because we tend to be a net seller. Our units are very efficient. We've talked about that any number of times, that we're of the most efficient utilities in the United States. So we tend to be able to sell power at a rate lower than others, which creates profits that can be plowed back into the system and lower bills.
Got it. And are there other adjustments in the realm of, because clearly, if we're going entire seasons before we know how, well, you all know in real time, whether we're keeping pace or not, clearly, if we're 5% down in this area, month after month after month, season after season, adjustments will have to be made at some point. I'm just wondering, what are the more real-time adjustments that could be made to reduce the difference between what we sell, generate, and have to pay for?
And I think the general answer is those happen in short term, so we react to the immediate weather, the immediate seasonality. And then longer run, if we see a change in weather patterns, we would adjust our planning and operation of our system. I will add that we tend to be a summer peaking utility for which we plan. So we plan like any other business for what your peak demand might be. Now, we take that into strong consideration. Winters have tended to be more wide-swinging, if you will. So this last winter was mild, the winter before that was mild. I think the winter before that was extremely cold, so it's kind of hard to guess at this point. Summers seem to be consistently hot, which drives our demand. And so from the long-range point of view, I don't think we see...
You think it nets out?
Yes, sir. In terms of planning and operation, but, but we do react even in the short run, day to day, week to week, month to month.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, so Reese is addressing the planning for our peak. So you've got to have a certain amount of megawatt or capacity to meet your peak plus at reserve. That's just, you have to do that. What we've been addressing over the last year or so, and you've been very supportive and provided leadership in, is changing the diversity of our generation. Because not only do we lack diversity in fuel, but we lack diversity in generation, which is have the same units across the board, and you've authorized us to get these quick-start units that will meet that demand, right? So that if you have periods like these, you don't have to run two large units, you could just run one, and then as the demand comes in, you could run the smaller units, and you could turn them on and off quickly. So that's trying to bridge that gap, because we don't like diversity in fuel or generation, but we're getting that diversity now.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so now to turn our attention to, again, an area we updated in the first quarter, Tallahassee Police Department, and a quick update on the COPS grant progress. Currently, there are 11 new hires enrolled in the police academy. The department is also currently processing 39 applications overall with the intent of filling all sworn positions by the end of fiscal year '18. The total COPS grant request so far through the end of the second quarter is approximately $95,000, and they anticipate to do a drawdown on the COPS grant associated with all 11 positions by the end of the year in the neighborhood of $271,000. As well, an issue we brought up in the first quarter was overtime. There's a marriage here between the first issue of getting more sworn officers out on the street and the reduction of overtime. There is certainly the anticipation that once they get these officers up and running and on solo status, then they will be able to take some additional steps to manage the overtime. Also, a service area we talked about in the first quarter update was Star Metro. Please remember that Star Metro, coming into the fiscal, into the current fiscal year, we had reduced the transfer by one and a half million dollars to improve staffing efficiency. To date, expenditures continue to remain within the scope of the fiscal year '17 budget and are consistent with prior-year fund-level experience. The overtime issue that exists is being managed in this service area as well through the hiring of temporary part-time drivers to reduce the overtime for the full-time drivers. The current programs, the current program, we will continue to monitor revenues and expenses for the service area, and we expect it to finish within budget. There is the issue of the invitation to bid for Florida State, and depending upon how that turns out, we will certainly make budget adjustments, depending upon the outcome of that, that invitation to bid. I'd also like to pick up on another update we did in the first quarter and give you a little more information on our progress with Hurricane Hermine. To date, six of the seven projects have been fully submitted for reimbursement, and that totaled $6.1 million in claims. These six projects include claims for damages to the electric and underground infrastructure, parks restoration, and the reimbursement of overtime citywide. The seventh project, we've also submitted. This project's a little bit different. This is for the debris removal for the first 30 days post-storm. This one's being done under the new Public Assistance Alternative Procedures Debris Removal Pilot Program. I worked on that a lot, to get that out in one breath. We so far have a claim in $4.5 million for that portion of our claiming process. And one thing to point out about that program is that typically with cost recovery, the city is responsible for 12.5%. With this program for the debris removal, our responsibility is half of that, 6.25%. Now, with that discussion and that update on the second quarter of fiscal year '17, I'd like to transition to the fiscal year '18 budget plan and give you a little bit of a look ahead about some of the assumptions we have and the things we're considering as we look ahead to fiscal year '18. The process will be similar to what we've done before. It's going to be adopted through a multi-stage process with several public meetings, this one being the first one, and direct ongoing input from the community. Will contain a specific focus on funding public infrastructure, infrastructure needs, and public safety priorities as they have been currently established by the Commission. We do expect some additional focus on expenditure impacts from the fiscal year '17 reorganization, and we'll be monitoring that and expect to have some discussion about that going into the fiscal year '18 process. And of course, the fiscal year '18 revenue forecasts are based on the elimination of the business tax and the lowered millage rate from fiscal year '17.
Quick question on the Hermine piece. The typical city responsibility, is that a FEMA formula? Where is the 12.5?
Yes, that's established by federal law.
So they'll, they'll pay everything up to that much?
FEMA will pay up to 75%. The state will cost share in that also up to 12.5%, a little bit less for the pilot program, the debris management, and then we have the balance of that. We are looking for offsetting donated services that will reduce our responsibility, and of course, then, any, anything that we have to match. of course, then any, anything that we have to match will come from reserves when we can offset it by that cost matching.
Was there an initial outlay of money from the city? Is this mainly reimbursement we're dealing with, or?
Entirely, yes.
Entirely reimbursement, okay. And that all came from deficiencies or raised it?
We're using our reserve funds as the, as the, as the, there's a project established, we book expenses to that project, and then we'll repay that project with the, with the matching money from the state and the feds.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Could I clarify what you said? So basically, if it's a certain type of cleanup where the certain department does the work, you basically use the funds from that department, and then when the payback comes, you put the money back into the same place that you took it out of to pay for that service in the first place?
Yes. Yeah, we maintain the fund integrity and the department integrity of the expenditures and the repayment.
Thank you.
So in our look ahead to the fiscal year 18 budget plan, what I want to do first is go through some of the revenue assumptions. Yes, Commissioner?
Before you go.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. What just came to mind in terms of forecast for fiscal year 18, are we looking at the impact of increased property values and how that will impact the revenue from property taxes?
Yes, Commissioner, we are. We are working with Florida Department of Revenue, who of course go through this process every year, and I've also had a couple of conversations already personally with the property appraiser's office. So, yeah, we would expect there to be certainly some increase, I would think, in assessed valuation, and that's part of the metric and the calculation, if you will, as we do our projections. We do expect to have, there will be more final numbers, more solid numbers to work from. They come out in June.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, sir. So what I'd like to do is step through some of the revenue assumptions we have right now at this point to Commissioner Richardson's point, starting off with ad valorem property tax collections. Currently, we have an estimated 3.5% increase in collections. With regard to our electric, water, gas, sewer, and solid waste transfers, we're using the Consumer Price Index estimate of 2.5%, and that's per policy. Of course, we project no revenue for the business tax collections, and communication services tax is a revenue source that we're paying particular attention to because it has decreased about $1.1 million between fiscal years 14 to 16. So that's definitely one of the areas we're being careful with in terms of our estimates, and probably will continue to estimate that in a declining state. To continue on with our look at the revenues, there are current rate studies that are being conducted in water and sewer, and there's also a projected rate study for fiscal year 18 with our gas services. Electric base rate and stormwater rates will follow rate ordinance and prior study assumptions as we go into fiscal year 18, and there are no studies or rate changes expected for solid waste or fire in fiscal year 18. Further, with regard to our grants, it is expected that in fiscal year 18, for the ship grant, the CDBG grant, the ESG grant, and the home grant, that our current level of grant funding will continue into 18.
An assumption is right.
Now also, Commissioners, I felt it was important as part of this revenue update to touch on an issue that's very recent, and this is an update from the legislature from the last couple of days. Literally, there is a homestead exemption change that's going to go on the ballot. The issue is that it would provide an additional $25,000 of homestead exemption through an amendment to the Constitution. Currently, that referendum would take place, is slated to take place, in November of 2018 with an effective date, if it were to pass, by 60% of the voters in October of 2020, which is for us fiscal year 21. Based on our current estimates, and we were looking at fiscal year 17 valuations and exemptions, it would be about a 2.5, excuse me, $2.2 million impact to city services.
That's FY '20.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Is it October 19 or October 20, the effective date?
20.
October 20, 2020, yeah.
So it's yearly.
Is it, that would be fiscal year 20.
Yes.
I think it's October 19, October 19, not 20. So it'll be for fiscal year 20. So that's a typo.
Okay, and now I would like to make transition and go through discussion about our expenditures and the projections and estimates we're using right now on the expense side of the budget. As I mentioned before, touched on before, in fiscal year 18, it is expected that department directors across the city will begin to implement service delivery and staffing changes based on the fiscal year 17 reorganization and efficiency gains. As well, there will be collective bargaining negotiations for four city employee groups as we go into fiscal year 18. The four groups, the police officers and investigators, police supervisors, firefighters and fire supervisors. Some specific numbers from our current agreement, the police, per the current agreement, union agreement, police receive a 2% base increase with a 4.5% increase to the step plan. Firefighters receive a 3% base increase plus a 4% increase through the step plan, and fire supervisors, 7% increase across the board. For the current, very early estimates we're putting together on the expense side, we are using a 3% increase for all general city, general employees in the city. Further, stepping through a couple of more expenditure items and our process for our estimates right now, healthcare, we have projected to increase by 5%. Per April 5 and April 26 meeting you took to change the ordinance, we will implement the drop, the MAP, the change to the MAP program and take the drop costs out of the budget. We will also incorporate the most recent actuarial review, as we do whenever the actuarial report comes through. And of course, the budget will contain our continued focus on street and sidewalk master plans, which is currently budgeted for $6.5 million for fiscal year 18.
Can I ask you a question about this?
Yes.
You know, is this the same actuarial review that is being referred to as the experience study that was?
It incorporates what was in the actuarial experience study, but there was also a report as of 10/11/16.
Right.
As an actuarial report, but it does incorporate what was in the experience study.
All right. Well, I'd like to have a meeting on that with y'all and with the manager, please, so I'm more clear about exactly what you're doing.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
A quick question. Do we have, Mr. Manager, any employees that are earning less than a living wage with the city of Tallahassee?
Yes, sir. So...
Besides us?
I have some... Besides you guys? So the MIT establishes livable wage for Tallahassee, I believe it's at 11/15. 11/10, 11/15. The mayor and I had some discussions about that, and we've done some research. In our entire organization, we have two employees that are below that number.
And you are?
We'll take care of that.
Okay.
It will no longer be below the number.
That's correct.
We'll either give them a raise or fire them.
Bad joke, man.
Yeah, that is a bad joke, because I'm sure their knees are knocking right now.
Yeah, right.
They know who they are.
But Commissioner, you raise a good point, and the manager and his leadership have demonstrated this through the government, that the city of Tallahassee and full-time employees here are, with two exceptions that are to be resolved soon, you know, paid a livable wage.
And that is 11 point...
And it's adjusted, it's indexed.
$11 and what, how much?
No, it's... And that's to inflation, but it also takes in the characteristics of the community.
What did you say was 11?
I've seen 11/10 and 11/15. So it's right around between 11 and 12 and a half.
Could you all look into what it would, the impact it would have if we raised that to 12?
We can get you that number and bring it back.
At least for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so Commissioners, if I could, I want to transition back to fiscal year 17 for one moment. There are a couple of items we are seeking your approval on. Of course, we're seeking approval to accept the fiscal year 2017 second quarter update as presented. There are also three items where we're seeking supplemental appropriation from the electric RRI fund, and then finally, there's one for a transfer of revenue from the perpetual care trust fund to the cemeteries operating fund to extend the current grounds maintenance services through the end of the year and perform some additional storm-related debris removal and maintenance.
Move approval of items 1 through 5.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve items 1 through 5. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Commissioner Ziffer, can you register your vote?
Aye.
That's a motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Could you, could I ask a question about this number 2? What is this? Is this the exchange we made for Thornton Road to...
Yes.
To Arendelle? So it's going to be actually accomplished? Or you anticipate that it'll be accomplished?
The funding will be accomplished.
Okay, I get it.
We hope that it will be accomplished in a reasonable period of time.
I have some neighbors on Arendelle who can call the governor's office. If we ask them to all call, they will probably all call, so. But I will, let us know when that is final.
Oh, yes.
By the way, I wanted to ask also number 5, when are we going to talk about a new cemetery?
There is a, they have been meeting as a task force with members of the community and are developing a recommendation, and we expect to know about that very soon.
People are dying to take part in the expansion.
They are. And literally, I'm telling you.
Killing us.
These are live bodies we're talking to.
Well, some of us need to be making arrangements, so you guys need to get involved.
You're dead right.
And with that transition, move to next steps. I don't mean final steps, next steps. Next steps, there will certainly be additional opportunities for public involvement. We will, the public is always, of course, open to give us feedback, look at information that we provide online through OpenGov. There will be continued meetings with stakeholders. We also have our budget online at talgov.com. And then the future budget workshops will be June 14, July 19, September 13, and September 27.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
I just, for the viewing public, I want to let them know that this is, we have a long budget process. So if you're watching this at home, it makes me wonder why you're watching this at home, but if you are, we take, each time we meet, we get a little more information. And so the budget, the actual budget, give and take, like for instance, I've sent an email to the commission and the manager recently about possible savings by doing more things in-house in this building and our physical plant. Some ideas like that and different issues, we'll get into the detail as we get closer to a final number on the budget. But I'm glad that this process is much more transparent. Having the initial meetings leading up lets us know what our possible liabilities are and what our possible income streams are, and allows us to plan for legislative surprises like a $2.2 million annual hit to our bottom line that the legislature graciously gave us. So I think these meetings are very helpful, and I appreciate the staff work that went into them.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other items from Commissioners before we wrap today's update?
Could you give us about two seconds for me to look through here and see?
Absolutely. While you're doing that, I want to mention an idea to the commission for our consideration of the budget process. We've been, through our office, running this summer jobs program in concert with HR. This year, there'll be about 100 placements within the government outside of our typical parks and recs department, and the staff have coordinated with the private sector to recruit another 100 jobs, all within the private sector, as well as to raise money for the youth who are going through that program, for them to receive financial literacy training and, you know, some other sort of professional development training for about two weeks that we've been able to pay for through sort of sponsorships. And I think as a program has grown, that we may want to consider what it means to sort of seat this more firmly within the government rather than in the political office of the, you know, of an elected official, because I think the program does need to survive. It needs to continue to grow. It's a huge benefit to youth in our community who get access to jobs and training and, you know, career preparation. So I don't know what that really all entails, other than making sure that we seat this probably somewhere within human resources, but would like the commission to consider what that might mean and have the manager, you know, connect with his folks to also understand what that may mean for the government. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to know what the entry level, you know, you've done all these cost comparisons, and I wanted to see a cost comparison on entry-level police and fire positions related to those comparison cities. And I've got something here where I said I wanted more information, but I'm kind of trying to figure it out.
Just a follow-up to your question, as you think on that, Commissioner. Would the cities that you all have outlined for budget reasons also be the same cities you would outline when you're comparing sort of the condition of public safety? I don't suspect that they may be different, but I would ask that question just in case there are differences to be considered.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, over the years, as we've done the collective bargaining negotiations, we've used those cities as a comparison to figure out where we stand in relation to salaries for police officers and firefighters.
And this question is being asked outside of the typical bargaining setting, and I assume it will be brought back in the context of the budget conversation.
On really the last page, you have, at this stage of the budget process, the staff has identified departments' needs, blah, blah. It says, "Current water and sewer projects may change nearing the end of the fiscal year based off of identified available cash funding for current projects and results of the current rate study." What does that mean exactly for projects that are on the, in FY '17? I mean, will those change? The main reason I ask you is that from what I understand, those, both of those are in good shape, so why should we have to change any of that?
Commissioner, I think I read into it in the positive, to the extent we have available funding that we would not otherwise anticipate. We could accelerate projects earlier into this year.
Okay.
It's a shifting, maybe we can move them up a month or two.
Good story.
Yes, ma'am, I think.
Versus a cut. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that should be it.
The only other issue I would bring up in this setting is we, as a commission, took the step to sort of overlay onto a certain section of the CHSP budget, the sort of adoption of the promise zone, but in concert with the adoption of the promise zone, the sort of impact evaluation piece of this. And I hope that the experts have been around to brief y'all on how that evaluation, if they haven't, they probably will. I know they've done different updates along the process, but I know they'll be around to bring you to speed on that. Would love to get feedback from city staff and others, as well as these experts around, whether or not the program is in shape, that it could be scaled. This question of evaluation and measurement can be... and measurement can be scaled over the entirety of the program. And I think, I don't know the final conclusion to that, but I think it's an appropriate question to ask. We now have two years under our belt of having Sharon and the professors at FSU and at FAMU work through that process with the staff. I've gotten anecdotal feedback from agencies, I think we've heard them share it at the diocese also from time to time, as to how it's been, while they went in fearing what that might look like, how it's actually been a tremendous help to the agencies that have been able to take part. And so as we continue this, you know, this grind toward, you know, high efficiency with the limited money that we are able to put into the funding of those agencies and those programs, I think it would be worthwhile to explore what it might mean to apply that same access to resource to the other agencies that take part in the process. So I would just make that by way of an ask to come back as part of the process as well.
I have a question about staffing. I know that the auditor and the legal have both asked for another position. Is that included?
I'm aware of the position for the auditor's office and the legal. We have talked about that position also, and those will be assumed in the budget.
All right. You're assuming that they are going to be included?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
And then, for me, I think finally, this constitutional amendment that is proposed will be on, rather, the 2018 ballot. In order for our citizens to be able to make the most informed set of decisions that they can, Mr. Manager, especially in the context of the fact that there are already limits on local taxation as it exists, so I don't, you know, we're not necessarily near the cap, I don't believe, at the local, at the city level, but if there are essential services or services to be provided that this government has deemed through its elected representation to, have deemed to be important and critical to the quality of life of this community, I think it's only fair for folks to know what's at stake. If you take, I mean, the argument that I've been making on this topic is that if you take the ability for us to generate resources at this end, it's going to show up another way in the system, that it's not a fair comparison to just let people believe that they're getting $25,000 off of their property taxes and that there won't be payments or some demand for additional revenue at the local level on the other end of it. And so as we, this, I think this conversation extends beyond this particular budget cycle. But in order for folks to be informed, I do think that at some point, the commission and the staff have to have a conversation around, what does this mean? It's not, it's not what meets the eye necessarily. And I think it's incumbent upon this commission to have those conversations and to do them openly. I realize it's challenging with, outside of the context of an actual budget you're looking at, but if $2 million is extracted, or two and a half, and then you power that forward by a number of years, you know, real impacts can be had there. And I know in other communities, I think I saw Browards there at 78 million, Tampa Hillsborough, another, you know, sort of set of, so those are big dollars, 600 million statewide. And I just think it's important that the community know that we're engaged in that conversation in an open and transparent way and not waiting for the impacts to show up.
Mr. Mayor, it is going to severely affect renters. So small businesses and renters will receive no tax break. So when you look at the loss in services that will come with it, or, and/or the accompanying raise in fees or taxes, ad valorem rate, to be able to absorb it, it is, was a poor trade-off.
Very much so.
Also, Commissioner Delo shared that this impact of the county is $9 million, so that's over 11 total, community-wide. I think that's pretty significant.
It is, and then, you know, and I know we haven't really gone down this road, but what happens when folks start basically, you know, basically doing à la carte fees for service, you know, across the board, on every, you know, on everything? And I'd say it every time I fly, I would much rather you build whatever this bag of peanuts and this drink costs, rather than, you know, having to pull out the credit card every single time you want to, you know, a service rendered. And so, you know, I don't know how much leverage we have if we were to go to a scenario where you're basically charging people, you know, you know, kind of penny, you know, it's just...
Nickel and dime.
Nickel and dime is the phrase I'm looking for. Dollaring and dollaring them, you know, at every single corner for every single thing that they pull down by way of a service, that they're paying taxes under the belief that these things would be covered. And if that's going to change, we owe it to people to tell them how that might change.
Mayor?
Commissioner.
Yeah, and I think it's important, especially as we go through, you know, these budget updates and our plans going forward, that people understand, because there will be those out there, as we see every year, that will say, "Well, just cut expenses by $2 million." Well, that's easy for them to say, but the hard work is going to come here. And I think the level of transparency that we have in the budget, what the manager has done in terms of the reorganization and the savings that have accrued from that, I think we can safely say that we are doing the things that we can to keep expenses down, but still provide the quality of services that this community has come to expect. And so, as we, I think, get into this process, it's going to be incumbent upon us to get out ahead of the naysayers, if you will, and educate the community about what the consequences of this, not to try to tell anybody how to vote, certainly, but to educate the community about what the clear consequences of this could be. And so when they go into that voting booth, they are voting, it's an educated vote, and not just one based on, you know, "I'm going to save a few hundred dollars a year in my property taxes." But, you know, what is that going to mean to the quality of services that I have come to expect from my city government?
Commissioner Miller?
On that note, I do know that when we had talked about the increase, the year we increased the taxes, it was very helpful to have that tool where, I mean, I heard all these stories, and I'd say, "Wait a minute, here's the app, go, let's see how much it really is," and then they're like, "Okay." And so I think if you took an approach like that and gave people an idea, even if you just took a few example property prices and said, "To you, this will probably mean X." Because if it's a cup of coffee a month, you know, they might not care. The other thing, shoot, now I forgot, my other, the main thing I was going to say before Commissioner Richardson brought that up, so we'll just let it lie.
No worries. And I think it's not, you know, the question isn't, "I'm not concerned about paying that amount." It is, "I'm willing to make that investment because I know what it yields," which is why, not to get on the defend local, but to get on it, which is why these decisions get made locally, because the community resists, chooses to resist it, there's a way for that to happen. But for the state to then dictate it, and then communities have to deal with the fallout of it, is something completely different.
I remember what I was going to tell you, too. On the, what you had brought up about your coffee and/or your Coke and your peanuts, I had the occasion to manage a piece of property in Asheville, as you know, and it was a challenge to figure out, who am I supposed to pay for water? It was a different entity for water, it was a different entity for sewer, it was a different entity for everything. And people do look at their property tax bill, and, you know, it has everything on it, as opposed to bill from this one, bill from that one, bill from somebody else, bill from, you got four or five bills on the table, and they may look like they're not very much, but ours are all in one little package, and I think that is a lot easier way to address. I can, well, having personally been through it, I can tell you, it was way easier, so...
Got it.
Plus, our services are way better than they are in Asheville, by the way.
Commissioner? I mean, I'm sorry, Man.
Just, I mean, to the mayor's point about having some information, right? So the exemption that stands today, the legislation, if your property is less than $100,000, you will receive no benefit from this legislation. And if your property is 125 or above, then you will probably save about $10. So, for, obviously, for the city. And obviously, it will create a lot more pain than $10 worth, but those are sort of the numbers.
Just the bookkeeping costs are probably going to be...
Yeah, but that's why it's important to, for us to have an educational campaign, because, I mean, you're going to have people who, you know, property values at less than $100,000, thinking that they're going to get a benefit from this, and they'll go into that vote, and they vote, you know, and they're going to go into that voting booth thinking that they're voting in their best interest when they really aren't, when it's not going to benefit them at all. And so that's the educational campaign, I think, that we have to, we will have to engage in.
You know, and on the, so, I mean, first of all, I'll just say, I don't think it's too early to bring this conversation topic up, because it takes a while for this thing to begin to penetrate. I know we've got partnerships with the Village Square and with others around various town hall meeting settings, but it would be appropriate to have, you know, voices really across the spectrum, potentially, you know, having this community conversation, you know, right here, and to begin it earlier rather than later. I think the last homestead exemption, when it was voted on, I know all of us think intuitively that everybody says, "Okay," but it passed by like just a little over 60%. And that was before the threshold around these amendments had moved up from...
Fifty plus one.
Fifty plus one to 60%. And so, you know, I do think education can make a difference here, and I do think the open and public conversation on that can be helpful to most people. I think you would think twice around what it might cost you when you have that all laid out in front of you. All right, if there's nothing else, commissioners, we'll stand at adjournment until the next opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good job, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.